I'd like to call to order the February 24th. A special meeting of the four of the school committee.
The chairman, the March 1st.
I want to thank Vice Chairman Costa for correcting me because I'm looking at the date on the thing and I'm wrong. It's March 1st, sorry. Joining us by Zoom is Attorney Assad. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Hagia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hare?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larvee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed to be acknowledged impermissible. Deb, do we have any citizens input?
No, we don't.
No, we don't. Committee of the whole. Dr. Malone, are we taking them in order? It's the budget for the elementary schools in order as you have them?
Yes, we're going to bring in two at a time and we'll do it the same way we did with the departments and look forward to answering questions and addressing concerns of the committee.
Okay. Is it going to go in this order? So Fonseca and Laterno first? Okay. Who's first? Fonseca?
So, yes, first we'll allow Principal Lisi and Principal Sipson to talk about their buildings.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm honored, as this is my fifth year, presenting a budget for the Fonseca Elementary School. So, I'm really excited about a lot of the progress we've made and heading towards continuing our turnaround efforts. What I have to present to you today will support this work, keep a lot of what we have going, as well as looking ahead to what our students need in the upcoming year. So, again, thank you. This budget is being presented to you to represent 615 Fonseca Elementary Scholars. And so, it's a pre-K to five school. We are a Level 4 school in turnaround. I have been the principal of the school since the first year of designation. This is our second year that we're going into a budget season where we are not receiving additional grant funds. Last year, we were able to absorb a lot of the positions that we had taken on to support the social-emotional learning of our students in the operating budget, and that has definitely shown growth in both social-emotional as well as academic data at the school. So, one of the things that we're looking at is continuing the turnaround efforts that drove a lot of this work, that support the priority areas. And one of those is continuing to support our early childhood department and continuing to increase the number of pre-K classrooms to then support a four-unit school. My first year of turnaround, in 2017-18, we were able to open up two preschools that year in the Fonseca School. So, that was about 40 four-year-olds for full day. Since then, last year, we were able to, well, this year, for this year, we were able to add our third pre-K class. And we are looking to now, in our 2021-2022 school year, now add our fourth and final pre-K class. With that, that also comes with a paraprofessional. So, one of the positions this year that I'm requesting is a pre-K paraprofessional to support that fourth pre-K classroom. The position of the pre-K classroom teacher would not be an addition. That would be a conversion from a grade-four classroom teacher. Currently, there are still five units of fourth grade and five units of fifth grade. In third grade, we have three units of regular education classrooms and one SEI foundational English-language learner classroom. So, those four classrooms in third grade will then roll over and we will only need four fourth-grade classrooms. So, that fourth-grade classroom teacher position full-time would convert to the pre-K teacher position. In addition to the pre-K being added to the Fonseca School for turnaround, we also recognize that there was a significant increase within our neighborhoods of English-language learner students. And so, one of the things that we had started within the first year of turnaround is a kindergarten foundational classroom. And each year, that kindergarten foundational classroom rolled up. So, now we have a K to three foundational grade level span. Next year, we're looking at turning that into a grade-four. So, in addition to a regular grade-four classroom teacher being converted to a pre-K, another grade-four classroom position would then convert to a foundational classroom. So, that's a teacher that has a specific license for both classroom teaching and English-language learner instruction. In addition to the classroom teacher, which is not a new position that's going to be converted, we are looking at adding a position for a paraprofessional to support that classroom. So, per the district, all foundational classrooms that service students have a teacher as well as a paraprofessional in each of those classrooms. So, this would be continuing with that programming as we have before to support the classroom teacher and those English-language learners. In addition to our turnaround efforts regarding early childhood as well as English-language learner development, we've also been working on developing our teachers. And so, in previous years at the Fonseca School, there was a lot of need for a distributive leadership model. And so, one of the things that was a strategy in the turnaround was the implementation of four teacher leaders. And so, we've been able to utilize these teacher leaders for several different components of both two-way communication, having teacher representation during both instructional leadership team meetings as well as principal advisory team meetings. So, it serves both as a two-way communication for teachers. It provides a support for the teachers, a go-to person in the building if they have concerns. But not only do they support the teachers, they also support the paraprofessionals. So, currently, we have about one teacher for every 15 personnel. We are requesting that we can increase our distributive leadership model to increase by one teacher leader to have a total of five. So, that would be one teacher leader for approximately every 10 people or so. And so, that gives all teachers and paraprofessionals a voice on a weekly basis with administrative meetings, but also monthly at the ILT meetings where decisions are made. The last position that I'm looking to add on to the Fonseca School for next year is an ELA interventionist teacher. And so, over the course of my five years at Fonseca, we have had a special education increase from 11.8 to 17%. We have added and we've converted teachers to support the needs of those students in those special education plans. However, in addition to the students that are actually identified with learning disabilities or a disability in general, are students that struggle, students that may be behind the game, students that may not be identified with a disability but really struggle to keep up with their peers in the classroom setting, that may need additional small group support. And so, in grades two through five currently, we have approximately 115 students that receive and that need intensive small group support. I would say 15 of those 100 are also special education students that need an additional dose of support. So, we include them when we're looking at all students that need instructional support in addition to the special education teacher. And so, what we're looking for is an ELA interventionist for the older grades in three, four, and five for next year because looking at the numbers in two, three, and four this year, we are definitely going to see a high number as well again in the need for small group instruction primarily around ELA, but not limited to ELA. If we see that there's a change in need for math, we'll provide professional development to that teacher so they can support the math groups as well. So, at this point, I'm presenting to you a budget that maintains all positions that I've had previously in the building that have been built for social-emotional learning support. And we've seen great growth and stable growth. And we're looking at continuing, like I said, to support the early childhood, the language learners, as well as the students that are not able to perform at grade level at this current time and that are not showing the same growth as their peers. I'm ready for any questions.
Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Principal Lisi. How are you?
I'm well, thank you, Mr. Costa.
Thank you for your presentation. So, the teacher leader position, is that a stipend position?
It is a stipend position, yes.
Above and beyond their requirements and their teaching requirements?
Correct.
So, it's essentially another teacher you're asking for?
Uh, no, 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 no. So, the teachers would...
Oh, you're just looking for the stipend piece?
The stipend, correct.
Okay. I misunderstood. I thought you were looking for a teacher that was going to serve as a, in that teacher leader position. Because then I'm wondering, I'm like, wait a minute. You're looking to convert a grade-four. So, you're not looking for another teacher leader. Well, you're looking for the stipend to make that person a teacher leader.
Correct. So, I'm looking for one full-time position, which is the ELA interventionist?
Correct. Yep.
That is a full-time position?
To cover grades three, four, and five.
Correct. And then, it's a stipend position, the teacher leader.
Okay. So, the teacher leader, just a stipend, ELA interventionist teachers to cover three, four, and five because you noticed your data suggests in grades two, early grades, that's a need going forward?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the paraprofessional, that was for the foundational class?
There was one for the foundational SEI classroom for multi-language learners. And then, there was a paraprofessional for the pre-K.
And that was going to be the conversion from grade-four to, that's not a new one, that's a conversion for a grade-four to a pre-K?
So, the two paraprofessional positions are new.
Okay.
The conversion, Mr. Costa, is a grade-four teacher...
Teacher to a pre-K, a pre-K teacher.
Pre-K. And another grade-four teacher to the foundational teacher.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I get that straight, particularly because it's their new request. Certainly, they make sense. You've explained it and articulated very well why it is that you feel you need them. And I think that's the purpose of these meetings is to hear from principals, building leaders, exactly what it is they need and why. And so, to be able to say, this is what I need, and attribute it back to what you're seeing go on in your classrooms or the conversions because you're seeing a need to open up a new class, that's exactly what these budget hearings are for. I'm sure you raised that with the administration, but it's also important for the committee to hear that. So, I appreciate the presentation. With that, Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming. Great presentation. I just had a couple really quick points. That obviously, this whole school committee is all for the pre-K. There's no question about it. That's the best way to go. And it definitely enhances your four-year-olds and three-year-olds and gets them into the, into the system. And there's nothing more that I and my other school committee members would like to see that. But you did say you currently have three and you're increasing it to four? That's fantastic. And how many in each class?
We have 20 seats, 15 regular ed seats and five special education seats, and it's a full-day pre-K.
And you're adding a full-time para for that additional class?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Also, too, just looking at the attendance, do I see it right where the SY20, the absentee was 13.1 and this year's almost doubled?
Yes, so that's...
And I'm taking that's been pandemic and trying to...
Correct.
Are the attendance officers, are they doing everything that they possibly can?
So, the attendance team that we have at Fonseca, we really came up with an action plan to target and implement the students that were hitting that chronically absent mark right from the beginning of the school year. So, we had a lot of action plans put in place, a lot of home visits that we had to conduct. The school adjustment counselors have been contacting parents, the parent outreach workers. So, we've actually seen a significant decrease in the number of students if we looked at the chronic rate at this point.
Okay.
This was taken in December...
Yep.
...which we had a serious issue with students being, like, holding them accountable to be logging in, completing the work, showing the FaceTime, like, getting them, you know, to do their part.
Okay.
And so, we do have quite a few students that have been learning remotely, and we noticed that that was the issue. The remote and the hybrid students weren't showing up.
And you're confident, like, what you're just saying, is that that number's going to decrease at the next time that you...
Oh, for sure. We've done, the chronic attendance rate in 2016-17, my first year, was at 30.9%.
Okay, wow.
So, for last year to be at 13.1, we have plans in place. This year, it was really a significant concern to us and we targeted it. And so, I'd be safe, I'd be comfortable in saying that this would not increase or continue to increase drastically throughout the school year. This would stabilize and if not, go down based on end numbers.
Perfect. That's all I needed to hear. Thank you very much for the presentation. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hagia?
Just on that attendance piece, the, it also says through March 2nd. So, I would assume that 13.1 would have been higher between March 2nd and June 30th theoretically, same as...
Um, I would say it would probably, I don't think it would be the 26.8, but that ended right when we went into remote. And so, yeah.
Probably be higher. It might not be. It looks really drastic, 13 to...
Correct.
It's double, but if there's more behind it, I'm assuming.
Yes. But each year, we did show a significant decrease in the chronically absent rate. That was a big point in our turnaround that we had to really monitor. So, a lot of it was on that decreasing of the chronic and then increasing that.
Are they asking you to report that June 30th? So, when you report that number to the state, is it to compare apples to apples, is it June 30th?
I don't know how they're going to be looking at the accountability for it, but I would think that they might. But I mean, when we look at for our school, we try to do apples to apples as much as possible to make sense of the data.
Yep.
And so, we look at it a couple of different ways. And so, what I'm thinking, Mr. Hagia, is that what we're going to do at the school level is now, tomorrow being March 2nd, I'm curious to see where our data would be comparison to last year and then kind of see where it plays out.
Yeah.
But again, it's hard to predict what would have been for last year, but it was...
Things happen, so I get it.
Yeah.
The, I read the turnaround plan, and it was a lot of stipends within there mandated by the plan slash, you know, agreement with the FREA. Are those funds paid for through the state funds that you get? Or is that, where do those stipends come from?
So, the only stipends that we have right now are the teacher leader stipends, and then, we have the ELT. In the pre, I'm not sure which turnaround plan that you had looked at. In previous years, we had an additional stipend for the ILT, which is no longer there. Anytime the teachers need any, do any additional work, we apply for grants as needed to help pay and stipend them for that additional work. But the only stipends that we really carried over from the turnaround once we lost that funding were the teacher leaders.
Right. So, as far as the turnaround plan, I said it at the last meeting, I'll say it again. I don't believe that any of our turnaround schools, knowing that we have the money that we have, should be making conversions. They should be getting additions and not conversions, just speaking for myself. Do you have anything on the wish list that's not what you presented here today? Do you know what I mean by the wish list?
Yes, I do. Honestly, I felt that everything that I presented was supported. And with the conversions that we were able to make based on the student population and the numbers and how they fluctuate, I think we were able to make do with what we needed for support. So, I don't have anything, I believe, even on the wish list for myself.
So, if there wasn't more, more funding, what are you gonna, what would you recommend it be spent on if...
I mean, I have a wonderful amount of staff with me. I'd like to continue to grow their capacity and build capacity.
So, if we have a couple million dollars, you're not going to need any?
I mean, everyone can use money for sure, but we have to look at...
Yeah, no, I'm not being facetious. I'm being serious.
Yeah.
That we have, if we have these things, I think that's something to think about that we maybe can turn some of these conversions, you know, to keep the program going or to add another council, whatever it is. But I think those are just important pieces because we do have extra resources. And I was just curious to see where that was. So, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. I yield.
Mr. Corey?
Hi, Principal Lisi. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
So, as far as your presentation, it was really good. I've always seen you as one of the more proactive in our district because your school, the population there is so transient and the demands are so real. And I want to say personally, thank you for sticking in there with us all this time and working to turn that school around. So, how's the school climate been this year in the conditions that we faced with the pandemic? How is everybody there?
I mean, I think everyone is really stressed to the max just because of the constant changes and the workload. And, you know, our teachers at Fonseca love our students and they go above and beyond. And I have to say that through everything, the teachers, the paraprofessionals really held strong. And so, you know, we're in it together and there's that definite teamwork mentality. We all have our ups and our downs, but we're there to pull each other up when needed. So, I would say that, you know, is it the best of the best? As I've seen it before? No, because everyone's dealing with a lot of exterior and outside stresses that are hard to leave at the door.
Absolutely.
But everyone's showing up for the children every day. The teacher attendance, staff attendance at Fonseca has not been a significant concern. As I said, our teachers and our paras are showing up. They love our students.
That speaks volumes right there. The fact that they're showing up and that the fact that you guys are working as a team speaks volumes as to the type of environment that you're setting at that school. I know that you're a very energetic leader, proactive leader. I respect that. I hope you stick in with us. I am also concerned about the attendance rates. Previous to the pandemic, we had a very active attendance committee that was ready to step in and look for funding and ways that we could help all our schools, you know. And now, it's a different climate with remote learning in place as it is. So, I just ask you to keep trying to do your best and to state your needs to us so that we can support you as you need it. And I want to just wish you the best moving forward. Thank you. I yield.
Ms. Larvee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Principal Lisi. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good. Thank you for your presentation. Very well done. I, too, had questions on the chronically, chronic absenteeism and your wish list and a couple other things. Those things have been answered. But I have to hop on my colleague Corey's back here and just give you props because I know firsthand that you've been basically boots on the ground in getting out into the community and visiting remote learning sites and reaching, reaching out to your students who need you. You're one of the few in the system, and I just want to make our colleagues aware of that. You don't have to do that. And I, as a school committee person, appreciate you, appreciate your proactiveness in the system and at your school and go, what is it, go Eagles? Is that it?
Golden Eagles.
Golden, there it is. But thank you honestly for all you do for the school system. And I also hope you hang in there because I think you're doing great things at Fonseca.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dr. Malone?
Yes, just very quickly. Two years ago, when they lost the school turnaround grant, we funded and continue to fund in this budget their extended time. That's an important investment, district-wide initiative. We have not made any changes. Now, they've been in turnaround now. This is their fifth year. We have not made any changes to the original composition. We've increased it each year. Two quick things. One, on the ESSER funds proposal for community facilitators, Fonseca would get one to do even more community outreach, parent engagement, support. And the second piece was security officer, of course. And then, the third piece was the district-wide initiative on expanding seats for four-year-olds. So, there is very strategic thought into the work that's happening at Fonseca. And then, the final part of that, of course, when she said build capacity, that's professional development and how we get at doing that. So, Fonseca would benefit across the board with a lot of the district initiatives that we built into this budget proposal. Thank you, Principal Lisi.
Ms. Lisi, you're going to be four units the whole way up, pre-K to five?
As of right now, next year, we will still have a fifth, fifth grade. But through turnaround, we were able to start enrolling that 2017-2018 year with four kindergarten, and that's how it was able to carry...
That'll roll up every year?
Every year, it rolled up.
So, right now, you're three units at four and five?
Grades K, one, two, and three are four units.
Then it'll roll up?
Then it will roll up. Grade four and grade five have five units. Pre-K has three.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you. Next up, go ahead.
So, I'd like to introduce, I don't know if all the members of the committee have met Principal Sipson. He joined us this year, first year at Laterno Elementary School, and this will be his first budget presentation. So, I ask kindly, go easy on him. But I'll turn it over to Principal Sipson. You guys go from there.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Malone. My name is Sean Sipson. I am very proud to have the honor of leading the Laterno School. I have spent my career mainly in Chelsea, Mass. So, I am aware of fiscal challenges as it comes to certain cities as it relates to this process. I also came from a district background. I was a teacher, an English-language learner teacher first, and then became the director of the program in Chelsea. So, I've seen this process at the district level. I like to come at budget with a collaborative approach, and that was sort of the nature, being a district person. This is my second year as a principal, first year again in Chelsea, and then, obviously, here in Fall River. I just want to take the opportunity publicly to thank the students, the staff, the parents, the community of the Laterno School. Particularly, I want to thank Dr. Malone for giving me the opportunity to serve in Fall River. And I want to name all my co-principals who have been very supportive of my induction. And I also want to name Maria Ponce and Eric Bradley and Brian Repoza as well for being both formal and informal mentors to me. So, I aspire to work really hard, and I am hopefully working hard to support all of our students at the Laterno School. So, Laterno, as Dr. Malone said, we're elementary, we're pre-K through five. We're a four cohort school with the exception of pre-K. Currently, we just have two pre-K, but every other grade, we have four. What makes the Laterno unique and special is that we house the foundational L program. So, we serve a quarter of our, our students. So, one of the sections of the four cohort is a foundational classroom. So, in these classrooms, you would see students that are levels one, two, potentially three, English learners. Most of the students are Spanish-speaking, Portuguese-speaking. However, we have representation. We have Arabic-speaking students, Urdu, Haitian Creole. So, I think one of the things that makes Laterno special is the fact that we are an inclusive and diverse environment, and we take a lot of pride in that. The second thing that makes Laterno special is extended learning time. So, if you look at our hours, we're eight twenty to three thirty-seven. So, this is funded with a collaboration of the 21st Century Grant and some city funds. So, this extended learning time, knowing that we have 30% English-language learners, is an important aspect of our school, obviously, with what is occurring now and potential learning loss. Having extra learning time moving forward is an important component of our school. We are a school in the middle. We're accountability-wise, we're at 20%, and we're a school on the move. We hope to continue to build upon the great growth and foundation that Principal Repoza started at the Laterno School and Dr. Reel added on. And we hope to continue that collective efficacy. So, my budget proposal this year, being my first year and also being, I would say, an atypical school year, I strategically had smaller asks. I really want to learn the, once we, I'm hoping that we go back in the fall to a more typical school year where I can further analyze and work with my administration team to target specific areas of growth. I really want to come to you and have a fiscally responsible plan. I want to ensure a return on investment just because, like I said, coming from Chelsea, I'm aware that there's finite amount of money. I'm a pragmatist, and I want to make sure that when I'm making requests, that I feel very confident that you're going to get a return, or students ultimately, a return on investment. So, going through our, our budget, the initial ask is to expand our paraprofessional stipends to meet the full day of ELT. Currently, many of our paraprofessionals have to leave a little bit early and not, they're not able to sustain through the whole day. So, one of the initial asks is just to make sure that we can cover those paraprofessionals who are an important part of our foundational L program so that they can stay to the full day. full day. Another component is strategically, the district is slowly moving positions funded through Title I over to our, our budget proposal, one of which is an assistant principal who is outstanding. So this is a strong, you know, fiscal move to make sure that we do that. So we're not reliant on title grants that we don't know the, the future of. So continuing to ask for that. Let me back up a little bit and just talk about our school leadership team. So this is our administrative team. So we have a principal, myself, we have two vice principals, and we have an academic coach. We have two school adjustment counselors. So we work collaboratively as a, the school leadership team. We are all administrators. We work to support all of the great teachers and paraprofessionals in our school. So want to strongly, obviously, maintain the, that, the status of, of the administration team, want to keep all the positions. As we go down the budget, there's going to be an ask for a pre-K teaching position as well as a pre-K para. So similar to Fonsica, we want to support the district's approach of supporting early childhood education, and we're going to house a third pre-K classroom. So again, four, four-unit school, with the exception of pre-K, we're going to go from two to three, get more students in at an early age and support their, their language, their content, and their social emotional development at age three and four. As we progress down, my ask, actually similar to Principal Leecey and Fonsica, I'm asking for two, two teacher leaders, stipends for that. We currently have a model, and I believe that it is a successful model of having teacher leaders. I'd like to expand upon that to make one per grade level. So if you were to come into Laterno, each grade level would have a teacher lead. Again, it's a stipended position. The rationale here is coupleful, two. One, to support distributive leadership. We know that we need to work together in order to accomplish all of the goals. We have some teachers that would benefit from a leadership position. So they sit on professional learning teams. They are down with that grade level-specific data interventions and can support both planning, implementation, and analyzing data at each grade level. So if we are able to get two of the teacher leader stipends, then I can have a model in which each grade level will have a teacher leader. This team, I think similar to Fonsica, will help serve on our instructional leadership team and help to support our distributor, distributive leadership model. At this time, I'm open to take any questions about me, my background, just because I'm new to the district, happy to, to answer, or particularly as it pertains to this budget.
Mr. Aguirre?
Thank you for your presentation. The question I had was on the full day para ELT. So you're currently, they, they release early and you don't have coverage? Was I hearing that right?
Because it's a paraprofessional position, we have obviously a teacher in the classroom, but some of those positions need to leave either a half hour early or half, they start a half hour later because in the previous budget, they, we just weren't budgeted for the full day.
I thought that there was a provision if we needed them for the service, like to service the kids or just to be there, that they just got paid extra money.
And that's correct. And actually-
So if I can comment. So the issue with the Laterno was that when, when we got the grant, all the teachers, you know, received ELT through the grant. And so initially when we got the grant, the grant didn't fully sustain itself. And so we ensured that all the teachers received the ELT. And we offered up some paras to get the time because there were certain, you know, certain needs that were, were not being met. And so, you know, when Sean met here during the, this, this budget, he had requested if he gets some additional paras to get the additional time so that he meets all the kids' needs.
So when you say the grant didn't cover it, that's the grant that was, went away and we, when we made the decision to not have it?
So we still have, we still have the grant for Laterno. And it's for an hour, it's an hour of additional time. And so the grant supports, does not support just over $100,000 worth of, of salary stipends, so to speak.
So we had to plug that?
So we've had, we had to take on-
Which we knew at the time is not new.
We had to take on that cost, yes.
And we knew that, though?
We did. Yes, we did.
To me, it makes sense if we have money to, assuming that they have needs, that they're not just, you know, if you're in a classroom, personally hate that, you know, up the bell rings, I got to leave. You know, that's not necessarily the greatest way to go about it. So I would support that, but I also think we should maybe look at it if we have money now to, to help schools like this that are, if they're in that situation for the rest of the year would be my, would be my preference. The grant, moving the vice principal to the title, is it Title I grant?
Yes.
What, what, what does it get replaced with for, for Laterno?
What does it get replaced with? We're adding the teacher leader stipends through there and so it'll free up any additional money going forward in the grant.
And then what, what does Laterno get, though, is my-
What do they get?
Yeah.
To get a VP. We're, we're just moving the funding, so it's off the grant onto the operating, which is what we've done every year for the last five years.
How much do the teacher leaders get?
$4,000 apiece.
So are you hiring 25 of them? If you move in a vice principal, $100,000 position off of the grant, hear me out, this is what my thought is. If each school should get a certain allotment of Title I funds, and I know this is different than how it always was, but I'm of the belief that if each school gets a certain allotment, let's say it's $100,000 for that position. If we're moving that $100,000 off the grant to the budget, that's $100,000 in Title I money that was spent in the current year at, at Laterno that's going to be replaced with, let's say, $20,000 in teacher leaders, or, or less. My question is, where's the other $80,000 going to go for resources for those children at the Laterno?
So first, we, we're monitoring Title I, always concerned with what the Title I allocation's going to be from one year to the next. Second, we're taking, we're taking on that expense in the operational budget. So it's not like, you know, it's, it's kind of a level, you know, it's a level playing field. But if there are funds available, we'll be able to use those funds to do professional development for teachers. We could do, we can purchase more supplies for students and things, or interventions for students to build into the classroom and move away from funding salaries in grants.
I'm not debating what we spend it on. All I'm trying to say is what's fair is fair. And if we look at it to say to this gentleman as the principal of this school, the same thing might apply to another school. It would be the same question. So in the current year, you have $100,000 in Title I funds being utilized. In the next year, my opinion is that $100,000 should still go to the Laterno School.
This level funded.
If it's, if you have differences in funding across other places, then everybody should take a little bit of that hit. Now, I've asked in the past to say, where's the Title I budget, which I have asked for? We don't do it like that anymore, I'm told. We just kind of throw it all in and we just make it work. That's very difficult for a school committee member to justify to say, he has $100,000 this year, he should get $100,000 or if it was cut by 10%, he should get $90,000. That's just my belief in order to be fair to this gentleman and any other school with a Title I. So I know we don't do it like that, but that, to me, makes the most sense. If you're taking a $100,000 position off, we should get some benefits to that school in the equivalent, regardless, if it was cut a little, so be it. I think that happened in the current year. We did some maneuvering and then we realized it didn't get cut as much as we thought. And then I'm not sure that we ever got to come back to this committee to say, okay, we're going to plug back into these other places. I'm just looking for equity across the board. And I think your presentation was fine. I appreciate the pre-K. Obviously, everybody's in favor of that. So I think you should have asked for some more stuff. I would ask you again, do you have anything on the wish list?
Yeah, I want to support the, this is from the MLL department, their proposal for Imagine Learning. It's an adaptive technology. It's connected to some of the school committee budget priorities, particularly digital intervention platforms. So that actually, originally I was, that was part of my ask, but the MLL took that ask over. So I would want to support that. And this is a program that will support our tiered intervention. It's designed to support language and literacy, particularly for English language learners. Knowing that 30% of our school consists of English language learners, this would be a supportive tool for us. If there's a, a wish list, I think one of the things that, you know, that jumps out to me, it probably jumped out to you, is the chronically absent rate. So I think there's many ways to be proactive around that. Learning Fall River, learning my school in particular, some other resources that we currently have. We have resource officers, we have school adjustment counselors, and we have community facilitators are some of the, the ways that we can do this. So I would probably like to collaborate with the district to see what is the district's approach to supporting attendance. And from that, it may look like an ask for additional school adjustment counselor or potentially a position that could support reducing our chronically absentee rate, which could look like a position that's going to be proactive within the community, making connections with families. So something like a parent liaison or a community facilitator.
I think that makes sense. My last question was, I thought I heard you say regarding your administrative team, that you had one. I'm just trying to make sure that what I see here is accurate. I see a dean and two intervention coaches for a total of three instructional admin, calling a coach an admin. Is that accurate? Like that's what you, when you said you want to preserve what you currently have, that's what you have?
Yeah. I, I don't view the coaches necessarily as admin. They're, they're not evaluative. They're the FREA, and they function in combination of supporting teachers with coaching in class and PLC as well as student intervention in our tiered intervention. So the dean is an academic dean and they are most certainly an-
Yeah, no, I totally get it. And I'm just trying to compare each school, how many you have of intervention slash coach. I know they're not administrators, but-
Yes.
At least you have three. So if I compared that to another school had five of those folks, we should, to see equity, we want to be able to look at how many students you have, how many you have, and it should kind of match up. So with that, I yield. Thank you very much for your presentation.
I appreciate it, Mr.-
Mr. Cory?
Thank you, Principal Simpson. The pleasure. I had, had the honor of meeting you several months ago, and I was excited for you to be in our district, knowing that your background with ELL in Chelsea. That's, that's a real good marriage, you know, your background and our, our conditions here in Fall River. Laterno is a foundational L school. I just want, could you tell me again on the language lens, was that 31%? Mr. Simpson, 31% language learners?
That is correct. Yeah.
So I'm looking at the, the absentee rates. And previous to you coming to the district, we had a very active attendance task force, which was comprised of doctors' offices and school adjustment counselors and truant officers and the like. And, and we were really focused on what can we do, you know, to help increase attendance rates. And I'm really concerned about this chronically absent rate that's listed here. I mean, it's, it's really high. And so my questions to you are based in outreach, culturally competent outreach, you know, language competent, cultural competence, that whole thing. Is that something you might want to add to the wish list as well? You know, maybe an outreach worker, somebody that could, that could relate to the parents of these children and, and work strictly outreach all day long, going out to the homes, you know, trying to make connection with the homes to, to, to prompt these parents to get their children either on, on a remote computer or in a classroom, you know? That's what I'm concerned about more than any. I want, I'm looking at the cultural side. I'm very pleased at the way your school is running. And when you tell me that you're using mentors like, like you have, then it tells me that you're doing some really good background work to develop your school. I support that thoroughly. And I'm proud of you for coming here to Fall River and lending your expertise. I really want to try to develop the areas of cultural competence and outreach given the program at your school. So I would really look at that. And any requests that you have of us for that moving forward, I would thoroughly support. With that, I yield, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Conner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Principal Simpson. Pleasure to meet you. Thank you for your presentation. Just had a question. So how many underfunded, I guess, paras do you have for ELT? Or how many fit in that category where they're not able to stay for the duration of your school day? And if you don't know, that's okay. I don't want to put you on the spot, but-
Yeah, no, I, I think so. We have, the paraprofessionals that are important to us, I think immediately would be our foundational L paras. So we have one from K through five. I, I made this request to the district previous to this budget space, and the district has supported. So right now, currently, I have the paraprofessional staying the whole time. I just want to make sure that this is a sustainable move-
Okay.
-for next year. So currently, off the top, I believe it's eight paras.
That's fine. As long as they're being funded now, the district helps support that here, and you're only mentioning it because you want it sustained for fiscal year '22. I understand that.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, they're currently not funded. And looking at if there was a way that we could use funds from this fiscal year to obviously cover that, but it seems like it's happening already. So that's a need that's already been addressed. You're looking for sustainability.
Correct.
The ELL platform you spoke of, you know, I think it's a great idea. I would just suggest that get funneled up through Dr. Vera Cruz, because I know that she's looking at it maybe as a district-wide program. So I mean, certainly coordinating that through her department, obviously having a foundation school. I'm sure you'd get the same consideration that probably Vavara will be getting. But it makes sense. And I think when we're looking at available financial resources, that fits right in because it, it's something we can obviously look at purchasing that can bring that supportive services right to the classroom for those students that need it most. And so, you know, keep that on your radar so that we can keep it on ours. I like the comment you made early, so I won't ask you any questions about your background, because if this were an interview, I'd say you, you're, you're fine, you passed. But, you know, the collaborative effort in, in budget development, I think, is key. And so welcome to Fall River's collaborative effort. I think it's important for us to hear from building leaders. And so same comments I made to Principal Leecey, you know, that's the way it should be done. We should be able to tell the public exactly where their dollars are going and why, and how we're using them, and what the reason is for it, based on our data in our schools, school improvement plans, et cetera, district improvement plans. The one question I had, and it's probably more for Ms. Almeida, if I may, through the chairman to Ms. Almeida, would be the stipends, the two teacher leader stipends, $4,000 apiece, so that $8,000, is that counted for the teachers in their MTRS? Or is it just their base? Do you know? And if you don't, that's okay. I just-
I, no, I do. So it, it is MTR, it is, it is eligible for MTRS.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's just a percentage of their top salaries, years, whatever it is, the three or five? I'm not sure what it is for teachers, but so they can add that? All right. So, I mean, that's obviously something that the district needs to be aware of, particularly when we're adding stipends across the district for positions like this, because eventually that's going to be a hit to the retirement system that the city obviously should be aware is coming their way in, in the interest of full transparency. So if it wasn't, that's one thing, but we want to just be cognizant of that. Certainly, teacher leaders are important. We heard the reasons why they're needed in, in terms of that consistency or continuity in the leadership team or structure of a school. They seem like they play an important role, but if these teachers are going to be on these stipends for multiple years, it's certainly going to have an impact in the overall retirement. So that's something we need to be aware of. Good job with the pre-K. I, you know, I'm not going to beat that. You know, I think the more that we can expand it district-wide, the better off we'll be if you have that physical space for it. Certainly, I'm sure there are many students out there in the Maplewood section or South End section of the city that could benefit from an additional pre-K class. So congratulations, welcome to the district, and keep up the good work. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome, Mr. Simpson, to the district. Great presentation. I really don't have any questions for you. I, I just, maybe for Dr. Malone, just the, there's, you know, looking at the elementary schools, there's obviously a trend about the chronically absentee rate. And, you know, each principal, it seems like they're going to be handling it accordingly. But is there any kind of structured, you know, things that we're going to maybe talk to the principals about as far as what they, because I'm sure that the, obviously the chronically absentee rate is, is because of the pandemic. There's no question about it.
I mean, this is a state-
Is there any kind of, I mean, have we communicated with all the principals? And because it's not unique to, to any elementary school. It's just, it's just one thing that's going to happen. And, you know, I mean, it's what Principal Leecey said before. Is that pretty much what every principal's doing?
Yeah. So we're struggling with this across the state.
Right.
But here in Fall River, as you know-
But here in Fall River, as you know, we've been focused on attendance big time prior to the pandemic, and we were seeing some great results. And that, you know, if we didn't end the year in March last year, that last year was really going to be a banner year for us for the initiatives that we've done. As you know, we've hired additional attendance officers, we have more sacks, we've built community facilitators. This investment in community facilitators at every single elementary school for next year will be a big part of our initiative. More sacks, bilingual sacks that we prioritize in this year's budget, that will also be, I think, a benefit to us. But the bottom line, to address Mr. Hart's point, is as we reopen and we get kids back, you're going to see attendance flip the other way.
Absolutely, yes.
This is a result of the pandemic, and you know, we started the year choppy. So, you know, chronic absenteeism is based on 10% of available days, so that's 17 days of 170 school day year, which is what this year is. And, you know, we've had, particularly at the high school, we're analyzing data right now, I met with Dr. Curly and Maria Ponce today. Tomorrow, we're meeting with the executive team to talk about attendance and further reopening, but it's really, we want to get, you know, the schools back open so I can get my attendance and have a real understanding of this. So we're going to be doing surveys soon about parents who want to come back off Cohort B, as we think about rolling up nine to 12 and get them back into school, and then we start thinking about getting Wednesdays as a full day, and then getting back into discussions about, do we move to three feet from six feet at some point? Not right now, but all this is going to help. So huge strategies, and then just the final piece I want to add, the community facilitator that you talked about, cultural competency, that's the goal of what we're trying to roll out. We fund one at every single elementary school for next year. We also have a new position that we're calling bilingual parent family advocates, which is a part-time position of native speakers that we're looking at, this is something that Brockton has, and we're going to try to adapt that here, that they would go specifically to the schools that have the foundation programs and work with families there. The last part I'll say is, we're going to bring to the committee, hopefully next month, maybe following month, but hopefully next month, a proposal using this year's funds to get the Imagine and to get some of the other curriculum programming that we've shared with you highlights of. But those are district-wide investments that will roll across the whole district, you know, one-time cost of the first year of buying what it looks like. These are expenses that we will have dollars to be able to use. So our goal is to get that across the board so we can close the gaps of these second languages, which we have in every building. It's the question of total numbers, you can see that how the numbers have increased. So thank you, Mr. Sipson, for your presentation.
And I mean, it's not in every school, but the majority of the elementary schools saw like a pretty big increase. So, I mean, again, I know, I understood that there would be an increase, but it's pretty high. But again, as long as there's some things in place, Dr. Malone, then that's fine. It's absolutely because of the pandemic, there's no question about it. So that's the only, that's the only point I had, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when everybody comes in of the elementary schools, and even middle and the high schools, that it's just, it's a very, you know, it pops out right away on the page, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we've got everything going and ready to tackle the issue, that's all.
So we had, pre-pandemic, we were at about 96%. We increased our overall daily attendance. This year, we're seeing 89 and 90 percentages, but it's because there's been more kids that have not logged on during the remote periods.
Right.
That's why the chronic absenteeism is so high.
Right.
And so even though the daily attendance rate isn't that far off, the chronic absenteeism is.
Right. Ayeel, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Aguirre?
Just on that note, I think it's, to let people know too, what Superintendent just said about the 10%, that's not that many days, and once it happens, it's gone for the year. So these numbers are not necessarily going to show any of the work that you people are doing. I'm just curious if the principals have to submit either monthly or something to the central admin related to their attendance, and if we can get some of that data, because I think what it's going to look like, because we had two presentations and they both looked the same, we're going to have all these principals come in and feel like, oh, we're not doing, our chronic attendance is way up. I don't necessarily think it is for pandemic and all, there's probably more reasons, but maybe highlighting some of the work that's being done to see if it's improving would get people to feel a little more comfortable with it.
We're going to, I'll have something for the committee, because we're working on a document that looks at specific months, so you can, like, when we got serious, it's a state really about remote learning, which was really not until November, December of this year. When, you know, when the state said, you've got to be a certain amount of hours, and we changed how we did things, you're going to see an increase in attendance from those months. So we'll break that down by school, and we'll get it out to the committee in a Friday email show.
I appreciate it. I just don't want it to feel like as if you're not working hard, or your people aren't working hard, they watch these meetings. I get it, there's more to the story. So Ayeel, thank you.
Mr. Corey?
A brief comment, Mr. Sipson. I just wanted to check in with you on the state of these faculty. How's everybody hanging in there?
Yeah, thank you for the question. You know, obviously biased, Leterno is a special place, our faculty has worked really hard. I would say the thing that I'm most proud of is their willingness to try new things. I guess that goes across the board, all the schools, but the willingness, this week, these changes need to occur, okay, let's go for it, let's roll up our sleeves and let's try it.
I like, I like hearing that, because the emotional aspect of our careers here in education is what we're really banking on. We're really hoping that your faculty hangs in through all of these changes, and the challenges and the demands, and especially the pandemic.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Ayeel.
Sorry, Ms. Lowery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sipson, it's very nice to meet you. I haven't had the pleasure yet. Welcome to Fall River.
Thank you.
I'm also, just like my colleague, Mr. Costin, I'm happy to hear of your background. I didn't really know a lot about you, I've been kind of living in a bubble a little bit, but again, nice to meet you. I had concerns as well, I mean, actually, when we got this binder, my concerns about the chronically absent rate, but I'm not going to get into it, but I know Leternos last year was 19%, so you go up 20%, obviously it's COVID. So all I can say is that, to that, is welcome to the district. I can't wait to visit your school, see what you've got going on for social emotional support, and that's it. Ayeel, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, is chronically absent 10% like Kevin said, or 10 days?
It's 10%.
10%.
But Boston's 10 days, because I read that's one of the Yeah, that was confusing article.
Yeah.
And the data that they use is not the state data, so we can't figure out, we're asking questions of the state right now, how the Globe wrote that, because it's
Okay.
Their attendance, this is what's awkward. That, you know, oh my God, 40%. Pre-pandemic, it was higher than that in BPS. So it's a confusing story, but this year it's only 170 days, so it's 17 days would lead to that. So if you missed the whole month of September, as Kevin said, you're done.
Okay, for the year. Anything further? Next up? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sipson.
So the next up is Principal Lenz from the Sylvia.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Is this, I don't know, is this working? Is this on?
It's on.
Okay, thanks. My name's Patrick Lenz, the principal of Sylvia School. This is my third year at Sylvia. I've loved every minute of working in Fall River. I can't thank the Sylvia community teachers and students more. It's been even more apparent this last year, just how supportive that community really is, and how innovative the teachers have been, and how resilient the students have been. So it's my pleasure to be the principal of Sylvia. We're sitting at just about 750 students, a diverse population. We're just under 20% students with disabilities, and a big part of that speaks to us housing seven language-based classrooms. We added a seventh this year, so last year we had six. We have a few transitions going on right now. We're coming off of our first year of not having extended learning time, so we're in our first year of not having extended learning time for quite a while, and we're also transitioning out of housing the GATE program. So last year, we eliminated fourth grade GATE, and then this will be the last year of fifth grade GATE. And the reason I speak to that, it's going to go towards the positions that I'm asking for, and also our focus on, you know, meeting all students where they are in all classrooms. And that also includes enrichment as well, so challenging all students and meeting them at their level. Our heavy lifts this year with our school improvement plan, we're focusing on data-informed targeted instruction within our tiered system of supports. Sylvia historically has had a strong core, and that really speaks to our veteran teachers, and those veteran teachers supporting the newer teachers that have come to our school the last few years. Where we can elevate our practices is around the Tier Two and the Tier Three instructions. So we're really focusing on using data to inform our differentiation. The last few years, we've been having professional development for our teachers around social-emotional learning instructional practices, with the goal there to build our students' SEL competencies, so that they can become, you know, strong problem solvers, strong critical thinkers. And we're approaching that through a balanced instruction model, so that our students are allowed to have higher-level thinking opportunities. So again, that all goes back to our targeted small group instruction. In terms of positions that I'm requesting, the first is for a behavior therapist. And what that really speaks to is, it's twofold. One, we want the behavior therapist working with students both proactively and reactively, but we also want that behavior therapist to be a coach for our teachers. I'm sure you're all aware that classrooms have changed over time, and we're really asking a lot out of teachers, including speaking to the social-emotional needs of a wide variety of students. So what the behavior therapist could do is act as a coach, just like an academic coach, and support those teachers and train those teachers in different approaches they can use within their classroom. We want that position to be filled with somebody that has both a behavior and a therapeutic background. Some students respond more behaviorally, the behavior supports and interventions, and others need that therapy intervention, and some need both. So we're really looking for that, for that position to have both. We're also looking to add a .5 student adjustment counselor. Right now, as I said, we're sitting at about 750 students, so we have two student adjustment counselors presently, so that's about 1 to 400 ratio. It's way too much. That job is very involved. Counselors are working with small groups of students, they're working one-on-one with students, they're sharing 504 meetings and conducting bullying investigations, and the list really goes on. So we're looking for more support in that area as well. And then the last position is not an add, it's a conversion. So with fifth grade GATE being eliminated, we want to convert that position to a math coach. We presently have an ELA coach, but we do not have a math coach. So we have an ELA coach, and we have three interventionists. The dean is really serving as our math coach right now, but we really need someone specialized in that area to help build the competency of our teachers, and also to meet with students at a Tier Three level to support them with interventions as well.
Any questions? Mr. Hatzler?
Thank you, Mr. Lenz, I appreciate it. You mentioned that adjustment counselors, like 1 to 400 students, and I know you're getting to have the half-time adjustment counselor now, so that'll reduce that ratio down a little bit. I'm wondering if there's any chance between, you know, the superintendent can help me out here, we can get a full-time adjustment council over there instead of just a half?
So we have, the goal is that, once things settle out, we want to do, buy as many adjustment counselors as we can, if there's any additional. Now granted, we will have additional actual federal grant dollars, but if the operational can do it, the goal, we get one for Sylvia, and then the split was Sylvia, Stone, and Stone would have a singular, and we could help share with what other needs that we had. So the answer to your question is, yes, we know that in our budget, there's probably a need for two or three more sacks that we're going to prioritize once we go through all the pieces.
Excellent. I think that'll help out the adjustment counselors over there, their workload and just better service to kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to miss Lowery now before I forget you again. Go ahead, sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
No, ladies before gentlemen.
No, go ahead.
Just, I, that was my exact question, thank you, that was my exact question, but I think it is for you, Dr. Malone, as I, when I saw that, I switched over to Stone to see what they had for sacks, and I couldn't see any.
They've never had one.
I did not know that.
They use a very unique model with behavior therapists. It's certified behavior therapists.
So is that something that maybe we can discuss, maybe not us adding, well, when we get to Stone, and maybe another behavior
Yeah, I mean, I, what I, I would propose to the committee, at some point, if the committee has the will, I would definitely support the hiring of two full, instead of one that we split between two buildings, the hiring of two that we would have their own buildings and then any other needs with the Stone person as we see. Now, Stone, because of their unique model, has never, Ms. Shaw had never asked for a sack before. So this year, we had the conversation, we want to get you those services and supports now that she's K-12. So it's definitely a position that could do, I know we're going to have the funding for it. I mean, so I have it written down in front of me here, and, you know, just, I would suggest we get a couple more meetings before you vote on the final budget, someone would make a motion, and we put it in, and that would be it.
Okay, thank you. Ayeel?
Mr. Costin, then Mr. Hatzler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Principal Lenz, for your presentation. I don't have any specific questions for you. This is, third time, third time's a charm, I guess. It's very detailed. I appreciate your efforts in putting this together. The question I had, I guess more of a comment than a question, but based on what I've heard my colleagues say, and based on what I know the district's needs are, I think what needs to happen is that the committee's got to go on record and show its cards. Okay? So we hear the budgets are what our values are, and what our priorities are, and if that's the case, then we need to establish what ratio we're comfortable with in terms of student adjustment counselors to student ratio. We need to set that, and then we need to make it a priority and fund it. And so this, you know, sort of à la carte, if you will, well, it's a half here and a half there, and it's one here, and maybe we'll maybe approve two more. It's too fragmented for my, you want to talk equity across the district, then let's as a group and as a committee determine with the input, obviously, of all of you who know your students, what is that number? And I don't know what it is.
It's 250.
Is it 200 to 1? Is it, what
We use 250.
250 to 1?
Yes.
So if that's something that we're really going to, you know, continue to advocate for, then I think the committee needs to say, we don't want any less than 250 to 1 ratio in our district across all our schools, and make it a priority and focus on funding it.
Right.
I mean, that becomes the reality, and I understand it's one
We've done that, Mark, that's what we've done. That's why we're here tonight requesting more sacks. We've done that.
You've done what?
The 250 to 1, that's what we're working towards.
Well, I didn't hear that. This is the first revelation
That's why we have so many sacks in the budget.
No, I understand we keep adding them, but I've never heard
So the national, the National Association of Adjustment Counselors average, or whatever it is, it's 250 to 1 is the recommended.
Right.
So when we meet, we also do, we do a, when we meet with principals, we look at total numbers of kids, total sacks, total number of sped inclusion kids, total number of sped inclusion teachers, total number of foundation Ls or L or ELL ones, twos, and threes, and the total numbers of ESL supports. We have a ratio that we use, 250, 35, and 20, and then that determines how many positions we have in each of the school's budgets.
Right.
We've never been in the weeds like that to know, but I mean, that's something that I could have just put in the, every year, just wrote that out, and maybe next year in the budget cycle, I will, but we can pull that out and get you another analysis in another week or so, so you can see what that looks like across the district. We definitely will.
So I guess my point is that if that's the case, then it shouldn't be the first time we're hearing it. And I didn't hear it in the budget presentation when you outlined FY2 budget priorities. If that's the case, that's fine. All I'm saying is that we're hearing about additional, additional. Let's set whatever that standard is. Let's set whatever that standard is. If it's 250 to 1, let's establish it as policy, if you will, if need be.
Yeah.
Or, you know, or a directive, if you will, and let's make it, you know, let's make it a reality. And let's tell people why. Because prior to the discussion we're having now, I didn't know what the ratio was, and I appreciate you sharing it's 250 to 1. And if there's that level of commitment here on the committee, we'll set that going forward, and we'll fund it in this year's budget, and we'll make it a priority for future budgets. But it needs to be equitable across the district. We shouldn't be worrying about, well, this school has three, and their ratio is this, and this one has X amount of sacks, and their ratio is that. It should be straight across the board. The ratio is what it is, and that's how the positions get funded. Now, if the population changes, then obviously, we'll have to shift staff. We'll have to move a sack to a school that there's a greater need for. But I don't think this committee's ever shied away from approving positions, school adjustment positions, and I don't think it will do that going forward. So, with that, I yield, Mr. Chairman, and if you need a motion at some point prior to the end of the budget, just remind us, and I'm sure the committee will be interested in supporting that. With that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
So, thank you for your presentation. Last year, you had around 750, roughly, like you're basically close to what you are now. Correct. So, last year, when we did last year's budget, your ratio was 375 to 1, the same as now. Correct. So, I think it's important for us to have these discussions, but it's also important for us to know across all the schools, we have different positions called different things. So, I know this form, which I appreciate Superintendent and Mr. Almeida doing, because this is a good way for us to see, and I'm assuming that the principals get this as well. Do principals see this form on a regular basis?
No, that they don't have.
I'd like to recommend that we send this to all the principals yesterday, because what this is, is basically shows the committee all of the admin support instructional, all the different positions, along with how many students are in each one. So, you'd be able to see, okay, if I just look, it's not pitting you against another school, but it's looking at which ones are at 200, which ones are at 375. I think it's important. We talked about the student support coordinators in the past. As we go through with this process, I think we need to make sure that we're counting those as a school adjustment counselor.
So, great, great point, Mr. Aguirre. The goal is, so, two things that we've tried to do over the last five years, one of which is move core operating positions off of grants and put them on operating dollars. Now, I know why they were on grants, because we had several years, 10, 10 years of cuts. So, I, that's one of our goals. The second one is looking at the, counting the student support coordinators as sacks, but then also converting some of them into sacks. So, the goal is I want to get a model where we have sacks and not student support coordinators, although there are, I think, two schools that have school, student support coordinators where they really enjoy how it's functioning. But overall, we're moving to a model where we'll just have sacks and not student support coordinators. And that will be able to then really use our ratio to be able to show those, because you're right, for years, they weren't counted as sacks, and that, but if buildings had them, you know, it's the same three.
I understand, and I don't disagree. I think when the last time this got brought up, I did some research, and the student support coordinator, I think, has to have a school adjustment counselor license, which is, the license is important because it's a skill set of what you need to get the license, and therefore, they can do the same thing. That'll segue to my comment on the behaviors, the behavior therapists. The, I think we need to really take a hard look at the requirements in order to be a behavior therapist. So, we have a B C B A, which is a board-certified behavior analyst, which is, obviously, they get paid more than a behavior therapist, but we have to look at what is the qualifications of the behavior therapist. Now, a quick history lesson, back 10 years ago, as Superintendent said, when we didn't have any money, we originally created a behavior therapist so that it was basically a person who maybe had a bachelor's degree, but they weren't necessarily a certified behavior analyst that could coach other people, as Principal just mentioned. So, I don't know that we've adjusted the requirements in order to do that. But at the same time, what we did was we, they were independent, non-union personnel. Years ago, they created, now it's part of the union. So, now they have a salary that's commensurate very closely to what a school adjustment counselor would get, and I think we need to take a good look at that before we continue to hire a behavior therapist. Now, some people might not have the degree or the license and be awesome, but when you're looking at coaching, you probably need somebody that has a license as a counselor or a behavior analyst. So, you might want to look at that as well to say, we need maybe two counselors here or a B C B A. Do you have special populations in your building as well?
We do. So, we house the language-based strand. So, we have seven language-based strand classes.
Are you getting a cluster coordinator this year? Let me just check.
I'm going to check right now.
Not this year, they're probably, the three-year rollout. Okay. So, they'll get one to follow on you. All right.
Yeah. So, same point being on the cluster coordinator, which I agree with, just look at it, as far as I'm concerned, that 375 to 1 is not acceptable. So, you need to, we need to, as a committee, as everyone has said, get that number down, truth in advertising, let's call it. Some places have a guidance counselor even. So, you've got K to eight schools that are going to have a guidance counselor. Those all need to be kind of counted in so we can look at equality across the board. The, my last question is on the gate. You indicated the gate is the last year of it. Can you explain to the committee how that's rolling out, what it was going to look like next year in your building?
In terms of gate no longer being present?
Yeah.
Sure. So, it's, I try to emphasize that our focus is on meeting all students where they are in every classroom. So, that includes enrichment. So, instead of housing those students in one particular classroom, obviously, now they're going to be spread throughout all classrooms. However, our teachers have the ability to teach all different levels. So, that enrichment will still take place for those students that are ready for it, just like remediation and practice takes place as well.
So, basically, it's gone, but you're not, you're not necessarily going to have any special classrooms for the children that meet those standards that they've gotten into in order to be gate.
Correct.
Like an honest-type program or anything like that. It's going to be everybody's in the same room?
Correct.
I'm not sure that we've, that's the info that we received, as we talked about, you know, making a gate at each school or things like that. I was of the belief, and it's been said here at meetings, like an honest program of some type. So, we have four units, and one of those was the honest classroom. I don't think that that's necessarily what is happening, but I know we've been told that at meetings. I'm just curious how that goes moving forward, so that the children that come to the district that were in the gate program based on being a gifted and talented child, how are they going to get that similar type of service in a regular classroom? And I know you said they're going to-
Ms. Ponce?
-meet all kids where they are, but I'm not so sure what-
I'm going to let Ms. Ponce address the question.
If I could just add, Mr. Donald Benyard, I think that what we initially had discussed was when we're phasing out gate at the elementary level, obviously, the fifth graders that are at Sylvia and Green are going to go to CUSP the next year, and then we'll phase out each year. All of our fourth and fifth grade teachers, we're trying to do the L with K D O B, so that they are able to provide instruction at every school, accelerate as well as remediate students, right? At the middle school level, we are going to, as we phase them out, we are going to pilot an honors class for students, but every school will have, will be able to have an honors, every middle school will be able to have an honors class. That's the plan.
So, just a couple years away, is that what I'm hearing?
One year.
Right. Instead of housing just gate at CUSP, more than will have an honors program, talented will also, as well as CUSP, as we phase them out, we will go into-
Same with Doran and Lord, too, but it's going to look a little different. But, so that's, so the universal design, fourth and fifth grade, you push all kids, you give the kids that are ready for more, more, you support the kids that aren't ready with more remedial, skill-based stuff. It's a concept. It's not, so, for example, Tansy School's two units. You don't have ones that's honors and one that's not. So, you have to look at your differentiated groups, and then across classrooms for various things, there will also be grouping kids differently. So, Walk to Learn is a differentiated model and some others, but the honors program that we typically knew will now be at the middle level, test-based, much more equitable across all of the elementary, all of the middle schools and the two-kid aids.
Yeah. I mean, my only concern, but if you had, the example you used of the Tansy two-unit is different than if we had a four-unit. You know, at four-units, you have more options to do different types of programming, I think. I'm still not sold on the fact that it's going to be as robust as we said it was going to, but people are expecting it to be. So, the pressure is on to make sure that we have a robust program for the gifted and talented. Not your issue, it's district-wide. So, thank you for your presentation. I yield.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah. With all this discussion, thank you, Mr. Lenz, for this presentation. I'm, my hat's off to you for running a school with 750 kids. I was, as I retired, I was an adjustment counselor at an elementary school with 800 kids here in the district, and there were just two of us on campus. And just to lend some perspective to the committee and to the general public, when I first became an adjustment counselor, we had, we had to share counselors throughout the entire district at each school. We were never housed. We always had to move around. There were so few counselors to spread around the entire district. And I know that the social-emotional needs back then, and I'm going to the early 90s, the mid 90s, and the turn of the century, the social-emotional needs were growing at that point, you know? There were influxes of minority groups into the city, and we needed to take care of all of those needs. That being said, I'm extremely proud of the work on behalf of this entire school committee and our superintendent for recognizing the needs for the growth in this particular area. We're talking about a behavior therapist, we're talking about a .5 adjustment counselor, we're talking about the growth of adjustment counselors district-wide, and it's something that we've been extremely attentive to and completely supportive of. I hope we continue to have these decisions, excuse me, these discussions. I understand that it's, each adjustment counselor comes with a price tag, and I know that our money is, you know, limited, but with Chapter 70, it's been like on the lower side, and hopefully, in the future, with student opportunity money, maybe we can increase the palette and the budget for more therapeutic services district-wide. And I'm extremely proud of the fact that you're running a school with 750 kids. You're doing a great job. I hope everybody's hanging in there with us through this pandemic year and the challenges that it presents to us as well. So, please extend our best to your faculty. I extend my best to you, and thank you for your presentation. With that, I yield.
Hearing nothing further, Mr. Ardet from Tansy.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, the Tansy School is a two-unit school, K to 5, so we have two classes at each grade level. We have, all of our special education students are included in the mainstream classroom, as well as our L students are also included, fully included, so we do serve those special Some of what's going on at Tansy these days, our theme this year is we can do hard things. So, we've turned the school into sort of superhero headquarters. We wear our capes, and we have our superhero sticks to practice social distancing, so trying to sort of make the circumstances as fun as we can for our kids, because that's what we do. At Tansy, we do a lot of work around personalized learning, like really getting to know our students well. Our small numbers, we're currently at 275, allow us to do that and really give kids a personalized, individualized experience based on their learning needs. As a staff, this year, we're doing a lot of work around active anti-racism, just really taking on that topic together and getting to a place where we want to start also having those conversations with students and teaching our students to be actively anti-racist. So, those are some things, sort of big-ticket items going on at the Tansy School right now. In terms of the budget for next year, I am asking for two additional paraprofessionals, and these would be paraprofessionals assigned to the two first-grade classrooms. We currently don't have any paraprofessionals in first grade, and there is absolutely a need. These are still really young kids. We train all of our paraprofessionals as interventionists, too, so they would be providing a small group instruction. With those little kids really building their capacity as readers, as mathematicians, the need is definitely there. So, that is what we're asking for at the Tansy School, as well as two teacher-leader stipended positions. We're thinking of organizing it, so one would be a K to 2 teacher-leader, working with the lower elementary, and then a teacher-leader at the 3 to 5 level as well. And we're still sort of toying with the model of what it will look like exactly, but I mean, we do have, we already have teacher-leaders at Tansy, so it's a matter of sort of officially making this official, and I'm thinking of maybe rotating the positions year after year just to build people's collective capacity, give them some different experiences to add to their toolkit. So, that's sort of, yeah, that's the Tansy School. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Any questions for Principal Ardet? Mr. Corey?
I do. I want to welcome you, Ms. Ardet. Again, I really like Tansy. I liked the old, the old-fashioned one-unit schools, you know? That's the kind of schooling I remember when I was a child, and I really appreciate the fact that we have Tansy up and running. Thank you for your leadership there. You've been a very staunch leader. You've got a great faculty. I know that you have great rapport with your faculty. I know that you continue to develop that rapport, and I know that rapport, that emotional support coming from you is going to develop the capacity of your faculty at Tansy, especially in these challenging times. You did, I mean, I'm glad to hear that you're working on anti-racist issues. I just get very, very concerned. Is it curriculum-based, or is it, how is that looking like?
Yeah. So, it's, we are, I did find, it's sort of, it's developed in-house, so it is, we are having conversations as a staff first and sort of getting that comfort level there just in talking about a topic that typically is super uncomfortable to talk about, right? But it is a really important topic, and it's sort of a commitment, a personal commitment I made to myself and sort of, when we sort of having these conversations together as a team to talk about these uncomfortable topics, you know? But we, we do want to be mindful as we start to roll this out with children in the future.
As a member of this community here in Fall River, I've been thoroughly engaged in those discussions for about 30 years. Back in the 90s, I ran a campaign called One Earth, One People Under the Sun.
Yep.
And it was all about, you know, having discussions on prejudice, bigotry, racism, homophobia, and we had some awesome, awesome discussions and awesome events around the city.
I want to talk to you more about that, you know?
I would be more than happy to share my thoughts and my experiences, because they were bad. We had a program that ran for about 12 years throughout the entire community and the schools. But that being said, I just get concerned in this day and age, in 2021, with idealism in our classrooms and prospering idealism that, you know, is very sensitive. I just want to know where it's at.
I think we are very mindful of that, yeah, and I agree with you, you know? So, it's really about sort of defining, figuring out for ourselves what we think it means to be actively anti-racist and starting to have those conversations within the lens of some of the programs that we already have that exist, like responsive classroom and the Choose Love curriculum.
Yeah.
Those are great tools that are already existing.
Yeah.
But, like, I know myself personally, I was raised in an era of colorblindness. You know, we were really talking, it was not, it was disrespectful to talk about race.
Yes.
You know? And that's, that's how I was raised. So, as well as my, many of my colleagues are in the same boat, you know? So, just trying to overcome that for ourselves first as a first step is sort of the work that we're undertaking this year, if that makes sense.
Now that the COVID climate seems to be easing a little bit.
Yeah.
We haven't visited as many schools as a result.
Yeah.
But I really look forward to-
Yeah, we've got to welcome you all back.
-maybe sitting in on one of those discussions at Tansy-
Absolutely.
-and just feeling it out.
That would be great. We'd love your feedback, you know?
I praise you for those efforts.
You and I will talk more, Mr. Corey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I yield.
Mr. Hatzler?
Thank you very much, Principal Ardet. On that same topic, I'd love to be involved as well. I have, I'm a little bit skeptical of rolling out something like that at an elementary level, so I'd love to know more about it. I want to know what the curriculum is going to look like.
Yeah.
So, before it gets rolled out, I would love to have a knowledge of what that looks like, you know, for children, especially in that age group.
Yeah. Like I said, the premise is really just initiating conversations, and let's talk about race, and let's really teach children not to be colorblind, but to see race, you know, and to see the value in it.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. So, please, I look forward to hopefully an invitation.
We'll loop you into, Mr. Hatzler.
That would be great. That would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Agia?
So you talk about paras, we need to add a few. What would that mean at next year? So you'd have a para in each grade if you have a two-unit school?
A para in each classroom for first grade, yes. So we would, not a para in each grade across K to five, but in, in first grade, we would have a para in each classroom.
Do you have any now? Is that adding to the current, or you're starting from zero?
No, we do not have paras in first grade right now.
I mean, in the school.
How many paras do you have, Chris?
I have six in the school. Two kindergarten, two service interventionists, para-interventionists, one supports the special ed population, and one is a building para.
And two more make, you want to add two to that?
I'm proposing two more. That would be special to grade one, yes.
Yep. I understand. Just like we were talking about in the other schools, you know, you have a small school.
Yep.
So therefore, the numbers look the opposite in some respects. Like, you have a principal and a vice principal, and only two seventy-five, so that's one thirty-five, whatever, each. If we look at another school, you know, that number's low relatively speaking.
Right.
So you must be able to allow your, and rely on your vice principal to do some other instructional type of work that maybe somebody else didn't that has seven hundred kids.
Absolutely, yep.
So I think that makes sense in, when you look at the big picture. But I'm looking at your sheet here, and it says two intervention coaches, but on the, the green sheet that we were talking about says three. Is that?
Yeah.
Are you off on that, or is that a something that?
We do have, yes, that is incorrect. So there are, we have two coaches and one interventionist. That should be three.
So three, but you're not getting, I just want to make sure you weren't getting caught what you currently have.
The tech, yes, our technology teacher also, also does some coaching as well.
But everybody has one of those?
A technology teacher?
Yeah.
Yes, I believe so.
So it's not like a, that's not an additional instructional coach per se? Every school should have a technology person?
Correct, yep, that's correct. Every, every school has a technology.
I wouldn't count them, but just looking at it, you have three, then you have the other admin staff.
Yep.
You have eight paras, that's a lot for each school. I'm not saying it's not needed, but when you look at it as a whole group and look across schools, I, I think, you know, we have to be cognizant of that.
Yep.
And I think that's why you're not asking for big positions and why they didn't give you big positions. So with that, I yield, and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, sir. Hi, Principal, how are you?
Ms. Lowery.
Good, how are you?
Lowery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. Right at the beginning, I mean, I've been, I've had the pleasure to meet you and, and visit your school, and I love, absolutely love everything that you do there. Thank you for incorporating fun during these times for these kids. I mean, I want to be, I want to make that known, that you're the first one to, to sit there and tell us that you're doing something a little out of the box when it comes to your students. And you know what that old saying, happy, happy wife, happy life? Well, you know what? Happy students, happy teachers, happy principal. But you, you're just, you're being, you encompass, and, and you're compassionate. And please don't ever let that go, because I, I really enjoy listening to you, watching you, and thank you for all you do at Tansy.
Well, thank you for your kind words. I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ardet.
All right.
Ms. Hoag from Watson.
Yes. Hi, my name is Celeste Hoag. I'm the principal at Watson Elementary School. As you know, we're a small school, similar to Tansy. We have two-track, K to five. We have approximately two hundred and fifty-two students at Watson. In terms of an overview this year, we've been working on our student discourse in classes, and we've been also working with developing a growth mindset in our students. We have a book study ongoing right now. In terms of positions for this budget cycle, it's similar to what I asked for, for last year. I'm looking to convert the two coaching positions to, to department heads, a department head for literacy and a department head for math. This is a similar model, like I explained last year, that I was a part of in Brockton at a turnaround school where we had significant change and increases, and I believe that having the two department heads will help provide accountability and increase in student achievement in an accelerated manner, which I know the Department of Education is looking for. Also, I'm looking to add a technology lead teacher position stipend for four thousand dollars. We're in phase two of the Project Lead the Way grant at our school, and if we do receive that grant, which we've been working with the Project Lead the Way folks here in Massachusetts, then that's a position I would like funded so that the teachers can get the support that they need to roll it out. It will be rolled out over a three-year process, going very gradually, but I think a lead teacher position would be beneficial overall. And those are the two positions that I'm looking for at Watson this year.
I, I want to see you get a, a new gym down there.
I know.
You know, when we went through that time, it's one of those things that always.
We have at least.
At least some padding.
We have at least, I'm, I'm, we told you we had twenty-five thousand, but we know it might be a little bit more.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And we're ready to rock and roll there.
I'll come help you staple it.
No, we were, we were designing it last week.
Good, good. I mean, that's one of the things I look at when I come through there, you know what I mean? I'm always in there, I like that little place, but that gym, just, I just know that that's a lot of concrete in there, and I always.
Well, I, I always say to anyone that comes in, we have one of the best gym teachers, phys ed teachers in the district. She takes them out all the time, you know, even, you know, on a day like today that it cleared up, she would have had them outside, so.
The place looks great. I definitely would not get it down.
It's going to be sharp when we're done.
It's going to be nice. It's going to be a great, great facility. That's what we need. I'm sorry, guys, I interrupted everybody. Mr. Costa?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And Ms. Hoag, thank you for your presentation. So Watson's gone through a transformation, new windows, new roof, boilers. What would it mean if your school, if we weren't able to deliver on the ADA accessibility that we requested? Is that, would that put a hinder in, in your day-to-day activities down there?
Well, Mr. Costa, you know, we had a little boy this past year. He was in the hybrid model, and he had, his leg wasn't broken, but he was in like a soft cast. So third grade, now typically, on a typical year, I would have maybe moved the classroom down to the first floor, okay? Because I don't have an elevator to get him up the stairs. But with COVID and with, you know, things just so particular, the teachers at Watson have been amazing this year, you know? We have certain trays for certain kids that come in, so there's really like a really good systematic piece. So we had a struggle getting that little boy upstairs. We offered, you know, to have the little boy learn from home, but the mom wanted him in school, and we want him in school. But that was, that was a struggle, Mr. Costa, I have to say, this particular year. Now, next year, without COVID, you know, to move the whole classroom downstairs for him, I would probably do it, but then that's disruptive to the teacher and technology and, and, you know, just having those anchor trucks there and a math class and whatnot. So that is disruptive. Is it doable? Yes, but I always put student safety first. You know, he didn't, once we got him up the stairs this particular time, that I think it was in November or December, he was in the soft cast, you know, he stayed up there. He used the adult bathrooms upstairs, you know, he had a buddy for lunch, he ate lunch up there. I actually was with him for lunch, you know, but so he, it was okay, but it was, you know, it was troublesome.
Not able to eat with the rest of the students downstairs in the cafeteria?
That's right.
Do you have any other students that would require the assistance of, of an elevator or any staffers that would need?
We don't at the moment, but you know, you know, as a mother of two grown sons now, I mean, whether they're girls or boys, kids are always, you know, tumbling, so you know, you've got that situation. And those are things, like as you probably know, that, you know, they just kind of show up on a Monday morning.
Right.
Where you don't have any sort of, you know, you know, call ahead about it, you know, because the parents do expect that the buildings are accessible to everybody.
Right, and they, you know, under the law, should have a building that's accessible for students or even staff who would need that accommodation. So, and I know the committee took a vote to send it down to the council, I, you know, I'm going to urge the council to take that up, hopefully very soon, because there is a timeline with having commenced that work, if we're going to consider a waiver. But it doesn't make sense to go through the transformation we have with roofs, with the roof, the windows, the boilers, and then overlook the fact that we have an obligation to make it ADA accessible as well. So thank you for that. I, I think it puts things in perspective. That student shouldn't have to eat in a classroom with a buddy. That student should have the ability to sit with other students at lunch downstairs and should have the ability to, to go from one floor to the next without having to be physically brought upstairs or vice versa. So my, my hope is that our partners in government will take that up, and so we can put that to rest. It's certainly needed. And as far as your lead teacher, that's just a stipend that you're asking for?
That is stipend, yes.
So you have a person in mind, you're just looking to stipend them so that they continue to do the tech piece?
She's trained right now in Project Lead the Way, because this was sort of a long-term plan that I talked about with the administration. So she came on board, she got trained. We're in the middle of doing the grant process right now. It is a three-year launch grant, but I really see it as, I'll have people who are interested to do that at the school, but it's always nice to have that support. And I think, and like you heard, Mr. Ardet, she's doing that a lot now within other roles, but it'd be nice in order to compensate her if we're going to roll this out gradually, you know, grade by grade over the next few years.
Well, thank you for what you're doing over there at Watson. I know Mr. Corey and I, as well as others, care deeply about Watson. That's where I went to elementary school, Mr. Corey as well. I agree with the mayor, the gymnasium, I mean, you just got to have a, a physical place for ducking around the columns downstairs and in that small little area. And the area gets even smaller every time I go back and, and look at that area. I can't imagine that we even conducted phys ed in that space. But, you know, it's on the radar of, of us, of the committee, and hopefully we'll be able to give something to the Watson community that's comparable to what other students have across our district. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hoag. I'm going to echo my, my colleagues' feelings about Watson. We got you, we got you covered, and I'm going to urge the city council to take that issue up and, and make it a resolution that passes. That being said, I'm really proud that you took, you took Watson School on at a point where we really needed somebody to go in there and anchor that school, because it, it was in a rough place for quite a while. That being said, how are things looking so far this year? Been able to go there to see you a lot because of COVID, but I just want to know how, how's your faculty hanging in and all of that?
I have to say, the faculty at Watson are very hardworking. They've been hard, they're the same faculty that have been there all along. If anything, I think over the past year and a half, I've given some pointed direction in terms of like grade level standards, you know, taught, and also this year, we're working on sort of mastery level, what's the student's level of mastery. With regards to those grade level standards, this year, we've also taken on, even though we're in the middle of a pandemic, you know, reteaching plans, and we work closely with the district with that. So kids take an assessment like A-Net, grades two through five, and, you know, well, how did they do? What can we do to reteach? How can we shake up the human resources that are pushed into that room and also the other curriculum resources? So we've taken the approach that even though we're in the middle of a pandemic and we have half the students learning at home, half the students in a hybrid model, that we can do it, and it's definitely, they've been, they took it on and they're doing it. We've seen growth in some A-Net data recently. We have, we're also looking at, which is interesting to look at with some teachers, sort of their data from last year, different kids, but it speaks to teacher practice, different kids, same standards on the same A-Net test, and look at the difference. So sort of having those like mini celebrations with folks, because I think that's really important.
So when you talk about mastery, you're talking about a kid mastering a concept before they move on to the next level?
Well, you can move on, Mr. Corey, but it's all, it's nice to loop back, because you're not going to hold them in that place, so they'll go on, but they have to get that intervention sort of to backfill anything that they might still need to be proficient at the end of the year in order to move on to the next grade.
Sure.
So.
And I see you got one adjustment counselor, and then you have a student support coordinator?
I do.
What's that look like, the student support coordinator?
The student support coordinator this year, last year it was a little bit different, but this year it's pretty much, they've split the role, K to two, three to five. We do a lot with attendance. Our attendance recently has been much better than it was previously, a lot of parent outreach. They've been visiting the learning pods, they sort of split those up. So I would say this year, it looks different than it was last year. Last year, I had the roles more defined in terms of family outreach and whatnot, but this year, it's sort of been an all hands on deck.
Sure.
So to spoke, so to speak, and they've been doing sort of similar roles, different grade levels with regards to that.
Well, I just want to reassure you that you have our, our real strong support. I'm proud of this committee that we've, you know, refashioned Watson School in such a way that we've, we've taken so much pride in that building and the work that Kenny and his team have done there. And I'm going to ask you to hang in there and continue to do the good work that you've done. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Agia?
So just to follow up on what Mr. Corey asked, so are you saying the staff morale is good at the school? Is that what I heard, or?
Um, I think we're all working very hard together to get, to reach our students, yes.
And you, would you characterize the staff morale as good, rad, okay? Like what is?
I would characterize it as okay at the moment. There's a focus on data, and there's a focus on reteaching plans, and not everybody is comfortable with that.
So sort of in the middle. Thank you. The question I had was on, you had mentioned that you had brought, tossed the two department heads?
Mm-hmm.
You know, to convert, I'm assuming that's converting two coaches or interventionists to those?
Yes.
Did we not fund that, or is that, why, why did it not go through? Is that what you brought up in, in your, your turnaround type plan? Is that what you were referring to?
That, this was the same request I had last year, a similar request I had last year, and it wasn't funded, because I believe the money wasn't in place.
The bottom fell out. We didn't have a budget until August. Those positions weren't in the budget. We had to fund it. What did we fund last year? It was like essentially level service.
Correct.
At the end of the year, additional grant funds, but not operating dollars.
Yep. So during the year, we never revisited it? Is that what I'm guessing?
No, we didn't.
We, we already had two people in place already, and since the position was still a coach, those two, those two people kept the role for this year.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, when I'm looking at it, I'm not looking at big money. I mean, I, I think it's, you're not taking somebody from scratch to a full department head.
No.
So it's negligible, the amount of money, which is why I was asking if, if it's the principal saying that it's something that would make sense, knowing the administrative structure, they're an administrative, all of that, those arguments, I think maybe revisiting it sooner rather than later would, would make sense. But along that lines, it just says program improvements on the second page here in the green, that just means the increase between a coach and the department head. It's not necessarily a new.
Yes. It's not, it's not an additional position, it's just a conversion, but because it's more money, it's a program improvement.
Yep. The only other comment I'd make is a similar one to I just mentioned with the other school that was two hundred and fifty. Watson School has very low enrollment, and when you look at both administrative as well as instructional staff, you know, there's a, a dollar figure you put on that. And I, I've said it before, and I'll say it again here, that there's a lot of resources that are put in when you look at the per student, so just keeping that in mind as we proceed. I know you're not asking for a lot of positions, but it's very telling to me if we're looking at the chart like this one, you know, across the board, the, the enrollment is very low and the achievement hasn't been good for a long time at that school.
Yep, so, and I've been there for about a year and a half, and we weren't able to take MCAS last year, so we've been able to take A-Net this year, and we've seen increases, which we've been happy about.
Great, and it's not, I'm not being critical of you per se, you just got there, but as,[1743.32] But as, if you, you put it, yourself in our shoes, you look at the numbers, you look at the whole thing, you say something's got to change here because we've been doing the same thing there for a while.
And I think, like you asked about the culture, I think it is a change. I did never, in my previous role in the district, I didn't really have the need to visit Watson because my role didn't take me there. But, so I can't speak to what went on, but I can speak to what we've been doing there as a team with regards to looking at data and tying instruction to, to data. And you know, that does make some folks uncomfortable. You know, it is a long time staff. So if I were to make a conclusion, you know, I would say, you know, things are a little bit different.
Yeah. And the numbers, like you say, the A-Net and whatever. Hypothesis is that those will improve.
No, I'm with you.
Yeah, all right. With that, I yield, thank you.
Superintendent? Very clear. We have made Watson a focus. You're right, it's been 70 years that they've been in turnaround. I've made leadership changes there, I've put additional staffing in there, I've put additional materials and resources. And, and I too feel strongly that last year I was upset that we didn't get to get, get MCAS because they were held in, in status. This year will be the same, but I know based on the work that they've been doing and it's definitely an instructional focus and that's why I brought Celeste in. There's been much improvement, much work being done and I'm, I'm confident that we're going to see some results there the next time we get to be held accountable by the state.
Anything further? Thank you, Ms. Hope. Ms. McKay from Green?
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. I'm Jen McKay. I'm the interim principal at Green Elementary School. And I'm here tonight to just discuss some of the budget requests that we have for next year. As I discussed in some depth last time we met, our school has begun to make great strides in our identified areas of, practice areas. Any request that I propose tonight is in direct correlation with what I had mentioned last time we met. If we take a look at the Green budget spreadsheet, I'll just go through some of those requests. The first one is on line three. That's, we are requesting that our student support coordinator position is converted to a school adjustment counselor position. This would allow our students to receive direct services from a licensed counselor and it would make the position more specialized. Having three Saks at Green would allow more concentrated work and we would be able to divide the grade levels evenly between three Saks, especially at this time as a recovery from this past year. I would like to really see improved partnerships with our families and students receiving more support. We also have that need for, to improve our attendance, so that would be another reason why having the SAC would be very crucial. The next one is line 30. We have our fifth grade gate teacher position that we're looking to convert. We are no longer offering the gate program in the district, but we still want to convert that position to an academic support teacher. The next piece isn't really an additional position. This is more of a restructure that I just want to discuss and seek approval on. This is on line 44. This is our K foundational classroom position. This was added this year after school started. The classroom was housed in one of our kindergarten classrooms that just happened to be remote, so we were fortunate to have the room. In addition, if you take a look at line 47, we added a third grade foundational position this year. And we did have a classroom available for that. With that said, this year, this coming year, we're going to find ourselves in a situation that we're going to want to add the fourth grade foundational classroom so that our kids can stay at Green and not be moved to another building because space will be an issue. We discussed moving back to our original K1 split for the foundational classroom. That would take line 44 and make it a grade four ESL foundational classroom. And that would mean line 45 would be labeled as a K slash one foundational classroom. The next piece, we are looking to convert our ELA coach interventionist position to the ELA department head. Along those same lines, we would like to convert our math coach interventionist position to a math department head. The reason for these two conversions are that over the last few years, our MCAS scores have declined. We are now in the bottom 10% of schools in the state. We are in turnaround. We need two content experts that are going to be able to offer us, our teachers structured PD and PLC time that will help them build their capacity. It is our goal for the two department heads to be able to also structure and practice effective teaching and learning cycles and be part of building our MTSS structure at Green. Finally, having those two department heads, we're really hoping that they'll be able to provide descriptive and prescriptive plans for tier two and tier three interventions. We find ourselves often in a place where we have all these students who need intervention support, but we don't necessarily have the right resources or the right plans in place for these students. Those are the, the positions that I am putting forth to the committee. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. McKay. As a member of this committee, it's, it's a pleasure for me to have you here tonight. My former colleague, and I could actually say I spent a good amount of time in your classroom when you were teaching. And I was really psyched on you back then. I saw the greatness that you had and that you exuded and you were steady as a rock. And I hope that, that translates into your leadership at Green School right now. I hope it's as steady as a rock. I know the school's in turnaround. That tells me that there's been a population shift in that demographic and that you're looking to address it head on. I, I, I want to assure you that you'll have my full support in all of your turnaround plans. And I know that as far as a math department head is concerned, I know that that's been an area of concern for a number of, number of years now. Seeing that the data, what the data reflects there. And I liked the way you described it as a prescriptive aid to help the teachers develop more capacity in dealing with the math scores as we continue to move forward. You've got my full support on that. But beyond that, I just want to make you feel comfortable and thank you for helping us this year as we put you in this role, you know? I hope that you have your faculty and staff together. I hope everybody's feeling good. It's been such a challenging year for everybody, including this committee, that you'll have our support moving forward and I wish you the very best moving forward. I yield, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Corey.
Anything further, Mr. Aguirre?
I know we spoke before about the department head piece at the meeting. I think that's something that I would definitely support. I can only imagine having 750 student, whatever the amount of students are, and only have a few administrators just for evaluation, never mind trying to help people through and coach them. So I think that shouldn't be looked at as a negative that we're moving those people. You're in a big building, you need more administrators. Am I reading this right, that the only other new position is a community field coordinator? Is that what, basically?
For the district?
On, on, it looks like on your list here that you didn't have a community facilitator?
We funded a math department head on the operating budget and I'm proposing a security guard and the, and the community facilitator for parent family engagement outreach.
That's what I'm saying, but that's at your school, like?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that's all for.
I'm just adding them up and it looks like one year was, it's plus one. So that's, I think the plus one on this chart was the community facilitator, which I think will help with.
And the department head.
Well, those are conversions.
So those aren't necessarily.
Okay, you're right, I'm sorry.
Hey, you're right.
All right.
That's right. Plus there is, there is an ELA department head too here. You see that?
They're both being converted.
And we're only talking about the math department head, but I just wanted to be sure. There's the two now. Yes.
So that's from the current year, there's none?
We're converting the math coach slash interventionist to a math department head and ELA coach interventionist to an ELA department head.
Correct. So in the current year, you have, and you're just converting them, which is?
Yes.
A shorter amount of money. I don't see that, I think it was, is their money moved from grants for the Green, is similar to the other school?
No.
They're still for whatever they get, they get.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation, I yield.
Thank you.
May I add one thing? Just both her and, and Mr. Aguirre, as we get, you know, further into this process, some of the things that I keep hearing, intervention supports, those kinds of things. If, if, if that money is real, you know, if the federal money, that it's likely I'll come back to the committee at one of these upcoming meetings and add more interventionists to every school. Those kinds of big ticket items with one-time monies will have, you know, an impact. So I know when I presented this budget of the 17 million of ESR, I've only articulated 2.6. There's going to be a lot more discussion through these processes. I listened, you know, I've heard a couple of things, Saks, interventionist, the curriculum supports. So these are all things I'm writing down. So when I get to you, you know, we get through these hearings, when we have detailed discussions, I'll probably make some additional proposals for some of these one-time funds to the whole committee, based on stuff that we've heard.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree. I think I made the motion last time to spend that money now. We reiterate it again, that we know we've got it. I know the new money is not in, we have it. So as far as I'm concerned, some of these things we should be doing, but I get it and I appreciate the comments that we're going to bring things back, but I don't want to live 17 million dollars or 2 million dollars on the table when these people have needs. So I think we're on the same page. I think we need to also, at the same time, it's not one time. We have to be careful when we spend it on things that are one time, but knowing that we've got to prepare a budget for that in the future. So I'm cognizant of that as well. I'm not saying let's throw 17 million dollars on staff that we can't support going forward, but take with the Student Opportunity Act. I think we've got some, some flexibility with that, I yield, thank you.
Okay there, Dr. McKay, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Cobb, Spencer Boarden?
Great, thank you so much for having me tonight. I sit before you as a principal of Spencer Boarden in my eighth year. Very proud to be at the school. We have about 580 students in ages pre-K through five, 29 classrooms, which includes nine substantially separate special education classrooms, with our students with disabilities being our largest subgroup at about 30%. So with that being said, I am asking for an additional special ed inclusion teacher this year. We do have approximately 85 students on IEPs in the, in the inclusion setting with four students currently. And we want to be able to expand upon those services and really support students, not just at the minimum level, but be able to increase our co-teaching. We also have a number of students from our sub-separate classrooms that push into the inclusion setting. And by adding that other special ed inclusion teacher, we'll be able to further support those students as well. I'm asking for three lead teachers, which are not new positions, but stipends. We do not currently have any formal lead teachers, although we are blessed to have many, many talented teachers who take on that role at times. So I would like to see, to us formalize that process. And as my colleagues have said, those teachers will be able to help with being mentors for other, for other staff members, planning professional development and be a great resource. I do have one conversion as well, from a third grade teacher to a fourth grade teacher, and that is based on a bubble classroom. So having an extra class that's moving up to the fourth grade. So that is, you know, just asking for a few things this year and if the committee has any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Cobb?
Mr. Corey? I do. I want to thank you for your committed service to our district, Ms. Cobb. Eight years at the school, that tells me that you're invested, that tells me that you've developed relations with your faculty. These are the things that drive our schools forward. Those are the intangibles. We can, we can put money, we can put positions on paper, but we can't put our hearts on paper. And so for that, I want to thank you, straight up. I hope, commitment is something in this day and age and loyalty that, that I value and trust so much. I think Spencer Boarden is just rocking and rolling, it's a great school and you're doing a great job. I hope your faculty is okay through this pandemic challenged year, you know? Do whatever you got to do to keep them happy and we're going to rock and roll into next year. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Cobb? Mr. Aguirre?
Just a question on the, are you slated to get one of the cluster coordinators based on the high needs children at this school?
I'm going to, I'm going to ask maybe Mr. Loesch that. I know we had talked about, we do have an autism specialist that's at the building right now and I believe that person will be able to be there full time right now just to service Spencer Boarden.
Go ahead, Mr. Loesch.
Yeah, that is correct. That is correct. The current person at times does have to go and do other responsibilities throughout the district. However, the current plan is for them to be at Spencer Boarden full time to be able to service those classrooms.
So it's an additional resource that you didn't have?
Yes, correct.
Charlie, I think it's just important to know, your numbers might be a little lower than some of the other schools, but the needs in, of the children that go there, that can take a strain on your administrative team and your counselors. So whatever support you need for those programs, I'm 100% with you. I yield, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Ms. Cobb? Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Next up from Viveris, Ms. Whitty?
Hi, thank you. I'm here to represent my lovely school, the Viveris. We are currently a K to five with approximately, right now about 700 students. Our enrollment is down, we current, we usually hover around 720. We house a strand of foundational L classrooms as well as a strand of special education self-contained classrooms for students with emotional and behavior impairments. 80%, 87% of our students are classified as high needs and 82% of them are economically disadvantaged. So we have three large priorities this school year and going into next school year. We had a loss of ELT funds, which sort of spurred a every minute counts theme within our school. And with that came a real stress on improving our core instruction and improving small group instruction. So based on that, it became obvious that we really needed an academic administrator within our building. Right now, we have two vice principals and myself and the vice principals are really taking up with the SEL concerns within the building. So we're asking for the addition of a department head, actually a conversion from a math coach to a department head. The second need that we're looking at is really addressing our SEL needs, having a foundational strand as well as next year being host of the DLE program that's being implemented in September. We're really in need of a bilingual student adjustment counselor. And we have a few conversions on the list. We're converting a kindergarten, a mainstream kindergarten to a DLE kindergarten, that would be the English-based kindergarten, and converting the foundational kindergarten to the Spanish-based DLE classroom.
I couldn't understand.
I'm sorry, the DLE classroom. We have an English-based classroom and a Spanish-based classroom. It's a 50/50 model. And also we had a bubble year going through, they're now fifth graders, going to graduate. That bubble classroom is going to be converted into a second grade foundational to sort of get rid of all of our grade splits within our foundational strand. And also an additional L power to service that classroom that we're now creating. Any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Whitty?
I do.
Mr. Corey?
Thank you, Tricia. Again, I'm really proud of, of us tackling the growing needs in the L schools and, and what we're trying to do at Viveris moving forward. Very excited to see all of the dual language thing take root.
We're very excited.
And I'm looking forward to supporting all of your needs, especially those with bilingual adjustment counselor. We need as much cultural competence as we can strive for, you know, because it's, it's, it's presenting itself now. Social engineering is affecting so many municipalities across our country, certainly here in Fall River it is as well. And I was, I was stricken by the numbers that you painted, 87% high needs and 82% economically disadvantaged. That's an extremely telling statistic and something that paints a picture of how challenging it is to run a school under those conditions. So I want to thank you, I want to thank your staff for confronting these challenging conditions, especially in these COVID times, you know? And I want, I want you to understand that you have our support as we continue to move forward and transform with the dual language track program that I'm extremely excited about. And I hope it also takes track at Laterno because that's another foundational L school that could certainly use those types of services. So with that, please let us know what you need as you move forward. You have my support.
Thank you.
I yield, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Costa, and Mr. Aguirre?
I think Mr. Aguirre was.
I think it was there, it was. Me? All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Whitty, you asked for a bilingual school adjustment counselor. The two do you have, are either one of those bilingual?
No, they are not.
Okay. I mean, obviously, your numbers and your, your population would certainly speak to the need for, you know, someone, a bilingual school adjustment counselor and, you know, regardless, if you had one, I certainly think there's a need for one there because of the percentage of the population that you serve. How are they getting by now, the school adjustment counselors, in terms of interacting with the students who, who are Ls?
It's not ideal, but we do the best we can. We have a lot of staff within the building who speak, you know, are bilingual, and they help us out with interpretation. We've been really utilizing the service land bridge through, that Ms. Cruz had brought to the district. It's an interpretation service that we've been using with families. Like I said, it's not ideal, but we do get by with what we can do.
I mean, your numbers would call for, if we are going to go on a ratio of roughly 250 to 1, I mean, obviously, an additional one would put you right in that wheelhouse. I'm just wondering if, you know, one bilingual school adjustment counselor would be sufficient to meet the needs of, and I don't know what the demographics are, and certainly your, your Saks could speak more directly to the number of students, you know, for lack of a better term on their caseload, if you will, that they interact with, and so if we can look at that, if there's a way to, not necessarily.
Right, just speaking in terms of how our population is, 32% of our students are, their first language is not English. So we sort of use that as a guide, so that would be a third of our population.
Right.
So to think about it in those terms.
About 200 or so, so, so one would cover that then?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're, we're supporting that population. I mean, obviously, transitioning into, you know, into school is difficult enough when English isn't your first language, and, and so I know the push is to, to get them to use English more, but in times of crisis, in times when they may not be doing well, they may default back to where they are comfortable, and that may not be in English. And so to have someone there to assist through that process, I think is, is extremely important.
And they're better able to express themselves in their native language.
Correct, and, and that's obviously, so I appreciate you, you looking at that and making that request, because certainly for that population, you're right, they're going to feel more comfortable expressing themselves in their native language, even though the emphasis and the encouragement is to use English first. But I would just ask that, you know, if there are other needs, do you have there? I know we're talking about, you know, outreach-type services, that you certainly continue to have those conversations with the administration as we start to wrap up and finalize this budget. You know, I'm excited about the work being there, being done there, not just with the L population, but with all of your students there. And as Mr. Corey said, you know, Laterno is another, you know, school where Ls have a rather high population, it's a foundational school, and so we want to be able to support, it's an ever-growing population across the district, we want to be able to support both schools so that you can deliver high-quality services. So thank you, Ms. Whitty, for being here, and, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity, I yield.
Mr. Agia?
So you had mentioned about a converting a department head from a coach.
Yes.
When I'm looking at the information we have, it looks like as if when the, the budget gets completed, you'll, you'll have a department head and two coaches, but on your sheet, it only says two intervention coaches.
I have currently an ELA coach and a math coach, and an ELA interventionist. We're converting the math coach position into a department head.
All right, so you have three now to start with?
Yes.
It just says two on the page here, so I was trying to see if you were getting shortchanged.
Yes, it does.
So you have three, and then one will get converted. When I'm looking at the sheet, the priority areas under the main sheet was blank, so I'm assuming that you must have something that, whatever came up with us.
I think it was a tech issue, to be honest.
I'm sure that you can send it to us at some point, but.
No problem.
I look at your numbers of 700 students, the three total of intervention slash coach slash department heads, as not necessarily enough to do the work that needs to be done in that school, just my first look at it, that's, when I was on this committee prior, maybe eight years ago or 10 years ago, when we, Viveris School was first into either turnaround or whatever they called it at that time, I think that was the highest school for interventionist coaches, department heads, like that type of focus on the instruction. And now I think it's, it's actually gone the opposite way. So for what it's worth, if you were taking notes, maybe to check on if we can see what it was before, I think along the ways, different administrations at the school might have chosen to do this with it or that, but really only having that many students, needy students, and that fewer amount of instructional staff like that, I think is a little low personally, but that's just my, my feeling on it, and.
We're very lucky that we have a fantastic team of teacher leads who take on a lot of responsibility, but this department head would help out tremendously.
And then I think you're getting a cluster coordinator according to this, so.
Yes, I've discussed it.
I think that's important, yeah.
It's very important, because it will help with the Saks, so it will free up some of their time being intensive with the, some of the high-needs special ed. So to get it, what Mr. Costa mentioned, there'll be more designated time with the students with that. So I'm very happy about the, moving forward with the cluster coordinators.
Yeah, no, I think that's important. We've got to get the right people, obviously, that are qualified to do the, that work, but thank you for your presentation, I yield.
Thank you.
Nothing further? Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you, Kate, thank you, Tricia.
Next item to come before the committee, new business. Anybody have any new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In order to introduce new business, is that in form of a motion, or is it, is it an idea that we can come up with on this? How's that, how's that processed?
I think you're going to bring up, make, make a motion for a change or something you want to bring up to discuss.
Yeah, it's just, it's an idea about the, the high school, the new high school being built, and to think about honoring one of our Fall River natives.
I don't know, is that new business?
That, that doesn't classify, right?
No, I don't believe that does. Mr. Costa?
Yes. I would say if Mr. Corey anticipated the information prior to 48 hours, that it would need to be an agenda item, but, you know, certainly, those types of requests generally go through subcommittee first.
Yes.
And then once it's been vetted there, generally makes its way back to the committee. But for tonight's purposes, I would say that it probably is something that would have been known prior to 48 hours, so therefore, it probably wouldn't fall under new business and should be added to an agenda.
Thank you for the clarification.
Anything further on the new business? Item number five is a request for executive session. I see Attorney, Attorney Assad joined us. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second.
We hear the purposes of, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Assad, please. Bruce?
Yes.
Looking for the purposes for executive session.
Madam Chair, laws, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. We've got the Massachusetts Commission against Discrimination Anticipating Complaints, as the chair has determined, that no possession may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position, on the litigating position of the committee. We would reconvene, there may be non-bi-statemental statements at that time.
And a discussion. I have a motion, I have a second. Roll call, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
I'm staying.
We're going into executive session?
I gotta, am I allowed to stay, Bruce?
Clear, all clear.
We've got to go into it.
Who's staying, yeah?
We just got to go into executive session, right?
Right.
Right, so you got to, you got to recess.
Back in session, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Har?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larve?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Contain a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman? Second.
I have a motion, second, discussion. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes, adjourned.